Just gonna pass this.
What did Mr. Doug have to say?
Oh, thank you.
I even got one for Dan.
I don't like to be.
She's just running a little late.
I was just saying, I saw her.
Yeah.
It's just a, I'll talk about it during, it's just a grant thing for livestock development.
Oh, hey, Jean. Is this agenda or next agenda?
Next. You know, that's too late for this one. You did, did you?
No, no.
Right, nope, next, next, next.
Under other, or is there times? Is somebody coming?
Give it a times. Do like ten o'clock, unless you got something else there.
Well, you know, ten's always a highway to run.
All right, do right after, do like ten thirty or something. Did you say holy cow when you let that livestock development thing?
No.
I said, wow, I wonder what he got for us there.
Well, that's on here, so are you gonna do it under here? Talk about it.
I don't know.
Here?
That's where the topic was being discussed. Didn't we just have a?
Yeah, okay, yeah. It'll be, that's right, she said she's gonna. Yep, okay.
Leave it in there?
Yeah, she said she was gonna.
Do we need to add it under that time slot, though? HR?
I think it'll go under there, Jean.
I think it'll cover those.
Well, I guess. Liza's gonna be a few minutes late, but I think I'll call the meeting to order. We'll go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda in front of us, anybody got any additions to the agenda? From everyone.
I think we'll have enough to talk about on the road that I need to talk about.
Hearing no additions, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a move to approve.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead, Jamie. Travis or Jamie?
Travis.
Travis. Okay, hearing, no further discussion, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Well, let's approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the April seventeenth minute.
Seventeenth?
Seventeen, yes.
I'll second those.
Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. The minutes of the nineteenth meeting, April nineteenth meeting. That was Jamie?
Yep.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Travis.
Rick?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, do we have to close, I have a motion to close bids on the airport road?
I will move to close the bids on the fifty-first Avenue Southwest bid.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed, okay. Vouchers. And just to let Darren know, we go through all the bills, every commissioner gets to see every bill, this all generally takes a half hour. You can sit there and stare at us, if you got jokes, you can tell them.
We can probably find coffee if needed.
As long as you don't talk about any business on the agenda, we're fine.
I'll vote for the confidence of our sure.
And that's pretty self-explanatory. I know I got questioned one time by a resident about bills, and I said, no. Every commissioner gets to see every bill. So just because it's videotaped, I wanted to mention that again, and I have time. So it's not that we don't see the bills.
That was one where they were implying that we didn't even look at what we were spending, and we were like, well, wait a minute.
Yeah. It was implied that we don't review. Anyway, the comment that was made to me then was, you mean you look at every bill? And I said, yes, every commissioner looks at every bill.
Carmen, I see like the credit card bill, have we gotten anywhere with getting departments their own cards?
No, not at this point, we're just starting.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll work on it.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss it with you guys, you know, before we give them out, so that the portfolio holders are aware.
And I think I did see that WEX that we use for fuel, they do do that. So maybe something to add.
Oh, yeah, this is, this card is, I mean, it's a state card, so they use it like, yeah, comms use it, we get money back, it's a good deal. I just gotta get used to it, it'll be our first statement tomorrow.
Oh, you have, so we have, you have it in place?
One month.
One month.
Yeah, so we're getting the statement tomorrow, so then we'll move forward from there.
Okay.
We typically get one, this is a beacon, this is just, do we get one from the star again, too?
Um, I think.
Yeah.
Dan?
Typically, this is one from the beacon, is that, is that one billing, and then we get one from the star then, too, is that, or how does that work?
I'm thinking it all comes through the beacon, because all of that is our ads, and I know we don't, we do most of ours with you guys.
I wouldn't know how you, I mean.
Can I just keep up the ads here?
Yeah, there's several of them in there, so.
Because I know we, well, because I've had to go to Beulah, too.
But it's all one company.
A lot of them are.
That's why I was wondering, that's how you did it?
Yeah, well, it's all one company, so yeah, I don't know if.
The billing must come from there.
Sharon is able to handle, if you run it low star and beacon, Sharon is able to do both, then Loriot, we can enable to do both.
It's just listed, that's, I mean, it's listed.
Yeah, I wondered if this is a just beacon.
I don't know, I was just curious.
I know the subscriptions are separate.
I believe it's separate. Hazen Star has their billing, Beacon has theirs, I'm thinking this is.
Did we get refunds on both of these file drawers that were damaged, like, for Alice? Are we getting refunds for both, like, I see there's one, but are we getting one for the second one that also came down? Do you know?
I am assuming we are, but that had to have been a lot more recently than the first ones.
Oh, that, I only saw it in here once, so that's, maybe it'll come in next time. Okay.
Do we use it?
I don't know if they've used it, if they must have worn the other one out, because they buy new bricks. They don't last very long, I know that. They used to put them on the one that just grew pretty fast.
I know Jim, like, just replaced his on the Bobcat out here, too, and I think they weren't all that long ago done, so.
They just don't last very long.
They don't last very long, and they're hard to change, or time-consuming to change out.
I was looking at it, too, it was like, was that for Jim or was that for Ken?
That was for Ken.
Highway Department.
Jim's was, oh, not one of them.
They were using it, and blowing some snow off of it, sleeping it. I'm sure it won't take long.
Well, it's cold when you're pushing the snow, isn't it?
No, it's like the bristle, like the.
I know, but I mean, the bristles would be.
They wear out pretty fast, but when you have concrete or whatever, they don't take a moment. You used to sweep a lot at the school, and then two, three weeks, and you're done.
Did we, we didn't get a new new haul tractor out the county shop, did we? That it got added to insurance, that's, they've had that for a while now.
Well, the leased one, maybe that's a new lease one.
Maybe it's the new lease one?
Yeah, because they, they add it right as soon as we get it, it's not, it's not that we ever delay that. It's not a good.
We get that.
Oh, yeah, twenty twenty four, it's on the back, twenty twenty four. That'll be new soon.
Good question for you, would you, do you just sign the back one, or do you just?
Well, I've always just signed the back one, when it all sticks together, and the auditor hasn't told me otherwise yet.
Yeah, no.
Carmen, what's this financial supply center?
Okay, now that came from the extension service.
What's that?
That came from the extension.
Scrubly at the end.
Well, it's to Gwen in the auditor's office, and you sign the voucher.
And your hand, arm, and wrist are there.
Oh, I see, I see. Oh, that would have been to do.
This says payroll and accounts pay.
Oh, those are checks, just checks. Yep, just to indicate checks.
Okay.
Yes, those are checks.
Oh, I saw, I think I just saw that one, that was, it was some software or something, right, that one?
Oh, no, this, yeah, the software is.
There was something for extension office that just came through. So like this eighty-seven thousand for this preliminary stuff, that, that'll go with that.
That's the.
Flex, like, some of that'll be covered with the flex funding, correct? Because it's for.
It should be, I thought it was, I don't know if it's just construction, or if it's designed to, I'd be entirely confused.
Is Charlie coming today?
I think so.
Does, um. Does the state have?
I guess I'd like to put it into.
You mean like Endor? Yeah.
I mean, have we got paid, or you just?
No, no, that's, you knew, you started, you.
Yeah, we get the same.
There's gonna be engineering costs, not anything that needs to be discussed.
No.
Got it, that's right.
Because we did it, it really worked, too.
What project's gonna cost, and just to clarify, did what's included?
One agent said, oh, you won't get a better, uh, you won't find a cheaper price, well, after I did the research, they're all the same, I mean, we use it, you know.
Yep.
So you wanna, you wanna?
Is Charlie coming today?
I think he's coming, I thought you said he was coming.
I guess, like to know if it's in, that's part of the flex funding.
Was that Hazen Star?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit different.
They always do before, too.
They don't have ads in there.
Well, yeah, we don't, we do.
I cannot deal with building suffering. Newspaper operations, so I ask any questions about paper bill.
Sharon!
Think we need to look at, kind of redoing this, because this portion never gets used.
Actually, I always used to have to sign it, and the person that's doing this, who just signs it, but it's usually like somebody like, she's a department head, but let's say, the sheriff's office, Lenny goes to training or whatever, and they're the ones that have to sign it and say, yes, this is, I did this, so that they got their signature on it, and then it's directed.
But this is for the notary.
Oh, the notary part.
This is all, this is for notary.
But we have the employees.
Okay, so you're the notary, you put in your, I, Carmen Reed.
Right, and then I sign it.
And you sign it. Well, you are, would be the notary, that's all this is for. I, Carmen Reed, and then you notarize it. Because I know sometimes it's put here, Jean Holt puts his name on here, well, no, this is just for the notary. And why this was ever here, I'm not sure.
No, it's telling us that you do swear, that you understand, you're putting down pretty minimal, and it's taken true and correct, that's what that's for, and I would sign here for this, but now you require a notary for this other person, which means that would be right there. But that's why I've always thought that, because you want the employee.
You guys are on Interstate Engine, Rick, you probably have the same question I do, so I asked Travis, it's a Charlie question, but I wanted to know if the engineering costs are included in the flex funding. So, I don't know if we should hold it, and just to.
My question, they never get notarized.
No, they don't, they never.
Of this project, is that what it means?
Yeah, because usually.
Make a note.
Because it goes through the bid, and then once the bid's done, then it will go to construction.
I don't, that's my, that's eighty-seven thousand, but.
Eight hundred thousand, we both have to cover.
That's what Charlie's asking, if my statement covers the engineering.
Me, as in the.
I don't know what percentage, I didn't catch the percentage.
Me, first you would scan, and then I stamp.
I'm not.
But I know.
I wouldn't swear on a white line, but I thought I read something on that.
Because I, I don't know, I wasn't, I'm not involved with it, so.
I don't know if we hold it until Charlie comes.
Yeah, or. So I want to ask Charlie a question on that when he comes in here.
Okay. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Yep.
If you want to review these, it's not.
That's okay. I missed the, I'll just miss the.
You know, I asked, just until Charlie prepares the engineering services for the airport, or I just want to clarify, it's part of flex funding, or it's not, or. That's what.
Okay.
I asked.
Makes sense.
Try us, no, he said it's a Charlie question. Oh, this, this kind of like all the bills.
Well, I'm counting with this one, then. This is a bridge. And when I go, we're gonna jump shields in twenty, jump shields, but it's here.
No, that's, um.
Which one would this become, Dixon?
Nineteen thirty, and that's, um.
I also, I was, I told, I said.
Thirty-four, is that, you got a number?
I know, that's why I'm like.
Yeah, that's the bridge.
This is over there, it's too much. Switching it, no, they're fit.
Yeah, I'm just thinking where this is located at. It's a state hazen. Because Beulah's like eighty-seven and eighty-eight, town split, township.
Good to see Jenny, I'm glad.
Oh, look at it, where did you appear?
She's got a container of pink starbursts, I was asking. Starting things off, right?
I was questioning which bridge that was, too, and I'm pretty sure I can assume which one did.
Somewhere by Hayes in here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I'll just pull that one, too.
Both interstate, yeah.
I'm assuming. No.
I think everything we've got is discussed within our realm.
You got the share up here.
That's what we felt. Hey, Liza?
Yep.
Do you think about what time you entered? Did you watch time when you came in?
I know, like nine fifteen or something.
Okay, got it, thanks.
You want to get the times down?
I guess so. Does that mean I get fifteen seconds to get it out?
I don't think so. I mean, if you would like to donate a pack.
I was trying to.
Pay for this one, my, 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 my house and fix it.
Did it.
That's how I see it.
I keep forgetting, I don't have a terminal in these ends here.
Well, you can always turn them.
I know.
They can't complain, they're just approved. That's what they can't complain, they're just approved.
There you go, I know, that's right. That is true, yeah.
We know we opened that bid, but they didn't even bid on it, but I don't know. They don't have them, or what?
Okay.
I looked at that, too.
Well, I'm assuming that's, I'm assuming we had, that's what Nancy got. He was in the hospital. Okay, we closed on the airport, we. It, no, all six of us, all like, that, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I tried again, I was like.
That was terrible, because people came with their bid, so.
Can I get a motion to table the two interstate bills until later in the meeting?
I'll make a motion to table those two interstate bills.
Do I have a second?
Table until later in the meeting, right?
Yeah, we'll table until later.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Jamie. Any further discussion? Oh, yeah, on that tabling those two bills, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
I'll abstain, because I wasn't here.
Okay, Jean, aye, motion carried. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the remaining bills?
I still move.
Rick?
Yeah.
I'll second Travis.
Any, any further discussion on the bills? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
I'll abstain again.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Okay, we did the bid closing, Beulah, Hazen Park Board Civil Emergency Siren Project.
I gave you guys a copy of what he said, that's horrible.
Morning, Chairman. Good morning. What I'm asking for is just a sign-off for you guys on a project that became very apparent last year, that it would be in need, and I talked to Liza and Rick about putting a civil emergency siren at Hazen Bay and Beulah Bay locations. Everybody knows when they go camping or whatever, they have a long day, sometimes they turn their cell phones off or whatever, and they're, might even be sleeping in a tin can on top of a roof beside the lake, and things happen, and all of a sudden, the wind comes up, and there's a storm there, and it's very dangerous. I think that would be a good mitigation project for us, our share is fifteen percent, the, above what it probably will cost, you know, the. The above what it probably will cost, you know, and it's an average. We're looking at a total of fifty thousand dollars. The state would pick up through Game and Fish ten percent. Our share is fifteen percent and federal government says seventy-five percent. So we'd be looking at, if I do my math, around seventy-five hundred dollars of the county's share for this project. I need a letter of approval or commitment from you guys, basically is what I put forward. If you sign that, Game and Fish and the Corps have also indicated that they're interested. I think this is just a done deal for for you guys coming from your emergency manager as a commission. We can mitigate the cost to human life and property just he would you. Even if we can get them people ten minutes warning, fifteen minutes warning, the sirens would be able to be set off. You know, either by the caretaker out at the park is what we'd be looking at or my office here in Stanton at the Sheriff's Department. To mitigate that much property damage, it gives families, say if you got kids, you can load them up in the car. You can go inland, get away from the lake. So you don't get blown in the water or whatever, drive down and ditch and ride the storm out if you don't want to go to the storm shelter provided at the at the park service.
Okay, and this is for Beulah Bay campground and Hazen.
Yes.
The seventy-five hundred, is that per siren or is that the total?
That's going to be our total. Yes, for for the project.
Total is fifty thousand.
Yeah.
That's a grant.
Our our share, what what you guys are committing to is around seventy-five hundred. And again, you know, and we could run into unforeseen costs or whatever and and, you know, I I still think we'd be in the ballpark where we should spend it.
But it is a mitigation grant though.
Yes, yes.
That means that the county's going to end up paying the fifty thousand and then we pay back. Then we send them the bills and then the federal will send us back seventy-five percent.
Yes, we're gonna pay. We're gonna pay the entire bill, but it's it's a pass through account.
They'll reimburse us basis.
And I have room for that amount. I I I think we have room in in either budget, either mine at the sheriff's, as long as it's coming back to you guys. Is what I care about.
This would.
Our our cost at the end of the year when everything's paid is the seventy-five.
And we'll show you that, but I know in the EM I looked up what they have and it will go over. It'll just be a red line, but we know why. And the monies will all come back. So in the end.
I'm not afraid of red lines at the end of the year, as long as I can tell you guys where it went and if it came back. So I I guess I'd be asking, Liza and I would be asking, or Commissioner Terry and I would be asking for a a motion and an approval on applying for that, getting it. And and the all recommendations from Stadium on this too is that this is going to be a no brainer for us. We can, again, it might, we might hit a hic up here or there because we got the Corps of Engineers involved, you know, they actually own that land. But if we're looking at not making any waves and putting them sirens on, it's a pole and an electric source, putting them sirens whereas there's already something developed like a lake store or whatever, it should be. You know, the the engineers will help us out with that.
Then before I ask for a motion, what about like Beaver Bay and the State Park?
The State Park, they they did a study and they operate off Pick Cities Siren.
Okay.
And they have full-time Rangers that they can send around with loud loudspeakers that I don't have through the campground and announce, go to a shelter or get away from inland or whatever. You know, we're expecting bad weather. Some of the the other B's, I I don't think we have a population out at like Beaver Bay. I'd like to warn everybody, but I don't think it's cost effective for the population we get out there, whereas if, you know, we've seen the development out at or you've seen Beaver Bay or Hazen Bay, say that they do go to Walleye Classic or something at Beaver Bay. Boy, we got lucky that that wasn't there during the time of that storm last year. Oh, we had a mess.
I think in some part that too is not only do we have just the campers out there at that time, we're he's in Beulah, we also have a lot of full-time residents out there too.
Yes, yes. And as you know, some of them others, we're going to get some interest that, you know, some of our subdivisions are going to look well. You know, like say Secaucoia Estates or whatever, or or Dakota Waters, you know, that that's a different split. I I think there's probably federal money there to get them sirens, but now we're dealing with, you know, something where we're going to probably ask them, because they're homeowners there, we're going to ask them to pick up, say, some of the county's share or whatever of of that grant price because, you know, it is an improvement. It'd be the same as Stanton wanting a siren. You know, we'd expect Stanton to cover some of that cost. Because, you know, they're an entity within Mercer County.
I just wanted to ask because it might be asked.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So we're I'm I'm willing to look at that and help them, but the cost split is going to be different again because they're, you know, they're more of a semi-private organization. So you get a subdivision out there that wants a siren. I I'm looking at if there's help federally or through emergency management to get them, yes, but you know, because it's not a recreational area and open to public use and it's more for their private use, they're going to be expected to at least carry some of that burden forward. And I I think some of them subdivisions are big enough where they should have a civil emergency siren. And maybe that's something we can look at in the future.
Well, I've always thought that if, say, like Dakota Waters and Lake Shore Estates and stuff like that, if they were to incorporate, they'd probably be the third largest city in the county.
Yeah, the lake is in the summary of it. Absolutely.
Cause, cause.
I have, yeah, I have a whole different makeup of what we need to patrol in in the summer already with Blue Ridge. Blue Ridge is just, you know, blowing up and every time you turn around, there's another big fancy cabin going up and, you know, Moda Way and, you know, it's 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 just tremendous out there.
Okay. I I got one other question. Besides the sirens is, like you mentioned, storm shelters, like I think the place where you can buy stuff at Beulah Bay is or in the bathrooms and stuff, is there, is that sufficient for the amount of people that are out there or should we be looking at?
No, it isn't. It isn't sufficient at Beulah Bay or Hazen Bay for the amount of people you get down on some of the summer weekends. You can get a lot of people, you know, they'll they'll go to them, the restrooms or the training or vaulted areas. Them are built to withstands a storm, but that's it. You know, the lake store out there, that's trailer house. That's that's going to be in the lake with every all other campers. The store, I think the sirens are a start, but yeah, that's something that, you know, again, we can look at into the future as these areas grow, maybe getting a storm shelter at some of these bigger public areas.
We did talk about it at L L E P C. That's it's been, it came with the siren talk, so it's kind of on everybody's radar after last summer.
Our local planning emergency committee, we've we've looked at these issues and I think we're all excited to start here and get that. Let's get these two sirens up, get everybody talking and maybe we'll generate some more interest within our communities too for storm shelters and more sirens.
So for me.
Cause the state did talk about, oh, go ahead.
And again, they're just, you know, they're civil emergency. They're just not storms, you know, they're for governmental emergencies. They're for, you know, wildfire reaction. They're for whatever we need to inform the public of when we hit that civil emergency siren that people are supposed to say, hey, wait, you know, the first thing I know they look up in the air is. But it's not necessarily for that. It can be any number of reasons.
My my question though is like, is this just a start then? Will we get to get sirens, the first step, and then like Travis is talking, it's something that we should
Budget.
Budget for and get a plan and get something for something ahead.
I think emergency management coming into next year, absolutely should. Get get an engineering type budget together to look at these and 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 we don't necessarily need studies. We know what we need. But we need to just to get us to the amounts of what we're looking at so we can look at some of these projects.
How much, but since we're discussing before there's even a motion, this is fine. This is typical meetings. How much of a responsibility is it of the county to make sure there's a storm shelter other than the, let's say, the park board? Or the entity that controls or has lease of these parks? Shouldn't they bear some of that responsibility to have?
Legitimate question. There's your fifteen percent of the county's state ten percent, you know, they they push the fishing out there. And the feds ultimately it's core land, seventy-five percent, you know, the federal government's coming through again. So I think some of that has been figured, but that's a legitimate argument to be had in the future to to bring to them people too that is going to benefit the most, but you know, I I think everybody in our community and Bismarck, Minot, Dickinson, you know, Blue Ridge, if you go out there, most of the people that stay out there in the summer, Dickinson. You go to the State Park or Hazen Bay, it's Hazen and Minot. You go to Beulah, it's Bismarck and Beulah, you know, it's kind of clickish, but we get people from all over up there. So there's no way to get the cost shared out to some of the people that use it. But most of the people that use it within our community, I I think our share, I think that's that's probably the split around fifteen percent.
And I'm I'm more looking at it as we're a participating entity. You know, not so much the driving force behind it, but definitely we'd have to participate as as the government entity that has the jurisdiction.
There's no way to get this done without your emergency managers doing it. Nobody else is going to pick it up at the park boards or they got, you know, they got their issues, just getting summer help to get the grass mowed.
But I mean, that's what you're saying. I feel that we would be the driving entity to get this thing rolling though.
Right.
I mean, we're looking for looking for other funding, but I mean, but we still got to be there.
And that that's a good argument to be had too, budgetarily.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I go develop a camp park, Jean will camp or park. And I have three hundred camping spots, but then I want the county to build me a storm shelter on my in my campsite. Got a little bit of a issue with that. I think we should.
Jean will be responsible for that because you built it, but if you look at it that way, the government, we beg the government to have Beulah and Hazen. So how do you then turn around and tell them, I'll build a storm shelter too? So we have to have some partnership there. I agree.
I I go along, I go along with some partnership, not a problem, but.
I agree. There 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 has to be because it is their property and they have to be a partner. They have to sign up with them.
So.
But yeah, if we're begging them to have it, we we should be in it to beg them to to help us do our share to help us keep us.
You know, when you look at it technically, if the state's putting money in it, the feds are putting money in it, we are got our fingers in the other pockets and saying that, you know, there are there are these other entities are helping us from Bismarck or Dickinson or whatever. How big or small it is, I'm not going to determine that, but you do have other help then, you know, rather than just just Mercer County.
Yes.
Okay.
And then one one other thing before you make your motion, I'll get Oliver and ready by three minutes, but Skyworm through emergency management for Oliver and Mercer County on May ninth at seven o'clock. There's a Skyworm class here at the LA Law Enforcement Center in Stanton. And I'm going to push that out in the press through emergency management and pages and our e-Dispatch to get as many people as I can here. Basically, they have a meteorologist come in and and kind of show and teach people what to look for, how to report it and stuff to dispatch, storm activity and cloud, different cloud type clouds to look at and technical stuff that even I probably need to attend that class, but.
When is that?
May ninth at seven o'clock. That's hosted by our emergency management for Oliver and Mercer County. What's that?
Seven PM?
Yep. In the evening, so.
You said at the courthouse here, right?
Yep, well, at the LA Law Enforcement Center. We'll see how many people. If it gets really big, we'll use the courtroom or the meeting room here or whatever and and we'll probably provide drinks and cookies to keep everybody busy. But yeah, attendance for that, like, that's a huge help to my office when we got, everybody knows whatever happens in Golden Valley happens in Zap Next ten minutes later and then Beulah ten minutes later. And then Hazen, it just goes right down the line. So if I got someone in Golden Valley telling me it's ugly, it's coming, well, that's that's sure to help. And they know what they're looking for. You know, some people's little pea-sized hail is another person's quarter-sized hail. But if I can get everybody consistent with that class, that will help you. But that's what I got when I asked for that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept this letter of support for the weather sirens at Beulah and Hazen Bay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Uh, Rick?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Jean, I. Motion passed.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Uh, planning and Allen Curdie renewal of non-farm residence to use as a rental house. This is a annual thing.
Yep, just temporary use permit six thirty-four for Allen Curdie, remove a non-farm residence to use as a rental house. Purse one within the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of section eight.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
I have a second.
A second. Jamie?
Jamie? Any discussion?
Um, question I have is, you brought it up for me. He said this is an annual thing. I I don't know anything about it, so fill me in a little bit.
It's right north of Highway two hundred on County nine, about a half a mile. I don't think it's a whole mile. Anyway, it's a half mile to a mile north. He built another, a second, he built himself a house in his original, whichever house he leases out. And every year this comes up as a temp use permit for him to be able to rent out the other house.
I think it's just, yeah, because he's got two houses out there, so it was.
Just curious.
Yeah, I had questions.
It's been since twenty sixteen, I guess.
I've had questions about it too.
Never been any issues or concerns coming in? Okay.
No. No, it's. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jean, I. Motion passed.
Thanks, Stan.
Forty-five. Darren, you're here.
Want to Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? I'll, uh, I won't take up too much of your time today. Does everyone have a copy provided by Carmen of the new? It says it's titled amendment to agreement and I'll give you a brief overview. If you don't, I have extras.
Oh, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. Just give me a minute.
You betcha.
Okay, got it.
We'll review that document in one section. I'm going to give you a brief overview. The same map I had drawn last time. The area that's addressed in there is Town Road twenty-eight, right up here, which is rerouted, miles to the north and then over and back down. Uh, and and this is the road that is temporarily temporarily closed by current mining. Just to review what we what I brought up last week. And then if we look at the documents, I will, um. I'll give you an overview of this process, how it works again. The original resolution is basically the resolution for road closure. It's dated in two thousand five. Um, any road closure that has a resolution, we bring before the county. And the reason that there is an agreement attached to this resolution is because of the reroute, which was paid for documented in the agreement paid for by Cato, the county reconstructed or improved the reroute. And the reason there's, most of the resolutions for a road closure are simply temporary temporarily closures of roads or section lines for mining. When they have an agreement attached, it's for funding of a reroute, which is why there's an agreement attached. And in that original agreement, it stated that this particular road closure will be open to public traffic in two thousand twenty-four. The reason I came presented it at last meeting and now this meeting is if you look at the amendment that we have before you, it's basically the the paragraph at the bottom of that first page. And I'll read it if you want to follow along. Cato will no longer be required to to reopen that closed road to public traffic within the year of two thousand twenty-four. Cato, through consultation with Mercer, shall reconstruct the closed road in compliance with application, applicable specifications and standards within a reasonable period of time after completion of surface coal mining operations in the vicinity of the closed road. Cato will now will meet with Mercer prior to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine in the event that the surface coal mining operations have not been completed in the vicinity of the closed road or occurrences beyond the control of the parties caused a delay in such completion and reopening of the closed road and request extension of time to complete reconstruction of that closed road, which extension shall not be unreasonably denied. That is the change that we made compared to what I presented at the last meeting. And it's basically saying if we're not able to reopen that closed road, which is closed by that original resolution going back to two thousand five, we'll readdress this issue in twenty-nine. And Travis, for one, you're very familiar with this. As mine plants change, we keep everybody up to date. I just wanted to apprise you of the process. And if I may, I'm going to show you one thing. Just for all of your information. Right here is Beulah Bay Road, the pink road going up. All of this land's been mined, reclaimed. All the section lines in here are now reopened, maintained by the county, right down to our permit boundary. All of this land's been mined, reclaimed, all the section lines in here are now reopened, maintained by the county, right down to our permit boundary. Which then re-allocated so we can control access. Same thing out here from the, from here over to DGC, these section lines. They, they're, we pay close attention to make sure we reopen them as soon as we can. So this amendment simply says that it won't be open in twenty-four. And instead of leaving it open-ended like the original amendment I threw at, uh, presented last time, we'll make sure we revisit this issue in twenty-nine. So for, for sake of explaining the rest of the process, this amendment, if it's approved by the commission, will simply be attached to that agreement. And in, in two thousand twenty-nine, if that road is not ready to be opened yet, I'll meet with you again and present it. So in, in, in summary, I'm asking that this amendment be viewed by the commission and approved and attached to that original agreement.
Do I have a motion to accept this amendment to the agreement?
I'll make a motion, Jamie, Liza, second.
Okay, for discussion, um, just, uh, let everyone know, um, Darren did approach us last meeting and we requested that, uh. If Cato could put in a date, uh, other than, and they did, two thousand twenty-nine. And we wanted to give the public a chance to be able to, and I see there's no one here to speak on behalf of, in favor or unfavorably of this amendment. So that was, that's why we ask you, uh, we wanted to give the public, uh, time to respond.
We did also, Darren and I and the land use, we did look through past ones for others and there was not this timeline in there like it was in this one, so it was.
I'll just add one more thing, thanks, Jamie. The, there are, most of the resolutions are one or two pages saying we're gonna temporarily close a section line. As I stated earlier, there's several of them that have an agreement attached. And the reason for an agreement attachment is because Cato either rerouted the road and reconstructed the road or paid the county. Rel, um, estimated funds to create an alternate road, which is why there's an agreement here, and now that this road won't be opened. We're just amending that attached agreement, which will go in our files and, um, with any luck, this will be reopened before twenty-nine, if it's not, we'll address it.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan.
Carmen, may I add, the signatures that go on there, I do not have the president's signature on that.
Okay.
If I take it, if I take your copy or a copy, I'll have him sign it and then I'll get it back to you.
Do you want me to scan it to you or are you gonna?
Either way.
Because all we need is Jamie to sign it. And I'll sign it, you can have it. And then once they sign it, you'll give me a copy?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
About, we recess for. Well, you can recess for ten minutes.
How many minutes?
Ten. Well, we convene at ten o'clock, let's just say that.
Ten o'clock, okay.
I know you're busy, Carmen.
Oh, no.
Would you, I know, would you like me to return the original to you, new attachment, file it in, um, in electronic files?
And that, because it's up to you, both of them.
I'm gonna have, I'll have Brian sign this, I'll bring that, this attached copy, you can reattach it to the files, copy.
Okay, sounds good. I will not lose it. So twenty-nine or twenty-one.
People think of that, probably turn the actual sign copy right to you.
Okay, awesome.
Do you have a phone number if you're trying to contact?
Uh, yeah.
That I can call? Contact them.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we got a few minutes, I'm gonna go get that one.
Okay.
Now's a get right up here, Charlie, you're next. Charlie, now's a get up here, you're next.
I'm off in space, we haven't listened to Dave in a minute.
And you got seven minutes yet, so. I can, uh, give you a heads up, you're gonna get asked about these. Okay? Now's a review, I'm gonna probably have, so you're ready for the answer.
Thank you.
And I think, uh. Question.
The airport one was whether it reflects covered engineering or not.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, only anything from April four, so we, we, what we did is we calculated up our total fees to April third. Because April fourth floor, based on the email that we got from the state, it came forwarded me. The April fourth was their magical cutoff.
Okay.
I don't know where I came up with that, because the award letter we got was just for construction and construction.
I worked on the number, I want to give you.
So, oh, by the way, I'll pay for these night fees from anything after April four. The award letter. So it must be in the date that we got awarded the money. Somebody said we can't pay anything before that, but we can pay. And we will have to, perfect, give the fees after April first for the bid letting. I think we have a tenant tied to it, that was the time of year, so that would be eligible for the grant money that we got. Unfortunately, all the stuff we've done between January and now, and April fourth, is in that bill. The eighty-seven thousand. This one.
It's the one.
Eight twenty-seven?
No, it's the, it says a structural replacement. Like the third or fourth page, um, between section nineteen and thirty. On one forty-four, eighty-five. We just didn't know what structure that was. Oh, that's County twenty.
That's County twenty.
Okay.
Coordinating, coordinating stuff on the construction side. And that's probably, I think, all these are from, I think, if I remember, like, we had to send a bill since January twenty-four. All these, so March and February, two months ago. Essentially, it will be disqualified.
Yeah. That way, you can get approved, yes, so.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted, uh, you guys get to repeat all of what you just said.
That's okay.
What, you get all the answers? I don't know if I got them all. But you sure had the answer.
So we're ready to approve it then, or what?
Well, he's gotta be on the, on the record. I'm not. So when you're on the table, you definitely have questions, so he's gotta answer your questions.
Yeah.
I was just telling him, there's gonna be questions.
That one and then the.
He can, I think he makes sense of it, it was this one.
I do, I don't know which bridge it was, what was that?
That one got that addressed.
Mercer twenty?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Me, perhaps I should start?
I know I said ten, but we don't have any time sensitive here, so we're all here. I think I'll, uh, call the meeting back to order a little early, we did, uh.
All right, Jesse, you can do the.
Highway Department, it's not a time-sensitive issue, so, um, I know I said ten, but it's nine fifty, well, it's gonna be nine fifty-eight by the time I get done saying what I'm saying right now. So we'll reconvene. Uh, Highway Department, motor grader bid letting. Where were we, approval? Well, that was bid letting for the road. Okay. Did we close the bid letting on the motor graders? At any time?
Uh, not the motor graders, we did the.
We did the airport road. Airport road.
We need a motion for the close of bids.
Do we have to close the bids on the, for the motor grader?
I'll, I'll move to close the acceptance of bids on motor grader.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. There.
Okay, now we can do it.
Now we can open them.
Um, their base bid, a two thousand twenty-four, our newer all-wheel-drive motor grader, seven-seven-two GP, a four hundred and sixty thousand. A snow wing and standard of eighteen thousand five hundred. Um. Trade-in, two thousand nineteen, all-wheel-drive cat laid, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Trade-in the number, line out of four, trade-in option to keep one, two thousand fourteen, little fall snowing, one thousand. Uh, total bid, line one plus two, less line three and four, is two hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred. And with the guaranteed buyback after six years or eight thousand hours, a hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred. Yep, the cat, one fifty, all-wheel drive, a two thousand twenty-five. Um, base bid is four hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. Snow wing and standard, uh, twenty-one thousand installed. Um, you got three thousand one hundred and thirty-five county installs. Trade-in of, the cat we have, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is guaranteed buyback. The number four, trade-in option to keep one, twenty-fourteen little fall snowing, fifty-one hundred dollars. So line five would be, um, base of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven seven five.
Three thirty-eight?
Yeah, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five with the buyback after six years, eight thousand hours, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So usually what we do is just.
So we receive two bids?
Two bids, yep.
Okay.
Butler and John here are the.
And then you'll review and.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And then have Todd review the bond, right?
Yes, yep. And then at the next meeting.
Okay. So just to let. Butler know. And, that there'll be no decision today, it'll be after our attorney reviews it and, and they review it. Okay? Sorry you drove up here.
Thank you, guys.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Okay, uh, bid opening on fif- fifty-one Avenue Southwest, I take it that's Fifty First Avenue Southwest. Uh, that's.
Airport Road?
Oh, that's one.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yep, up here, okay.
Yeah.
We're gonna go there?
Uh, yeah, we close that bid at nine o'clock, yep.
Okay, so. Looks like I have a secret total of three here in front of me. First one I have is from Northern Improvement.
And, and just for the record, we did check the, um, night drop box this morning, I talked to Mark about it, so, if anybody dropped them off, we, we got them.
And it looks like it checks out on the bid line in the board. We'll do the same, we can let Todd make a run through these as well. Okay, base bid from Northern Improvement. The total amount of five hundred eighty-eight thousand. Two hundred and twenty-two and forty-three cents. With bid alternate number one coming in at one hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-three and ten cents. And bid alternate number two, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents.
What are the alternates?
So the base bid was to pave from North Dakota two hundred to the airport road entrance, so roughly point six miles of paving.
Okay.
With roadway improvements for the remaining point four of the section, meaning asphalt or aggregate surfacing and reshaping of the roadway. The alternate was to pave the entire road from North Dakota two hundred all the way down to. The alternate was to pave the entire road from North Dakota two hundred all the way down to the end of the section in one mile stretch.
Okay, that's alternate one.
That's number one, right?
So that's an additional one hundred and eighty eight, okay?
Correct.
Understood.
Yep, and then your alternate two is the airport asks, and you guys approve to include in this project, then overlaying to their access road and parking lot to the airport.
And they're all independent of each other? Correct.
Correct.
So we don't have, even if we don't do the airport, it's still one ninety eight for the additional half mi- or whatever distance it is?
Correct.
Or we can not do the additional and twenty eight just for the airport.
Correct.
Okay? Clarification?
This guy right here, real quick. Yeah, the next bid I have is from Strata. They all checked out. Strata, base bid of seven hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars and ninety five cents. Bid alternates number one, price of two hundred and thirty seven thousand and twenty three dollars and thirty cents. And bid alternate number two, price of thirty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and eighty five cents. And that was Strata. And third and final bid is from Bectol Paving. All right, and. Bectol Paving, base bid of five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty six dollars and fifty five cents. Bid alternate number one, two hundred and twenty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety eight cents. And bid alternate number two is in the amount of twenty four thousand two hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty two cents. So I'll review these. And then I can give them to Todd. And at the next meeting, make recommendation for more.
Question on you.
Yep.
One, one was back from that bill, does, does your, uh, what we budgeted earlier, does the engineering cost? In that, uh, it's covered by that seven eighty eight that we were about to receive from the state?
Uh, the construction engineering, it is, yes, on the design side, they are only allowing reimbursement for anything on or after the date of award notice, so April fourth. So anything post April fourth that we have for design fees would be covered under that grant.
And the next question then is.
So what's the date on that bill?
April third.
Of course.
Well, it's everything that hurt happened between January and, and Ken brought, Ken asked me about that, so we, we budgeted for everything on April third.
My next question was when you were reading these bids, I was thinking, well, it's like, I'm just gonna pick one here, um, Bectol or whatever. If we were looking at seven eighty eight from the state, we spend five seventy, what happens to the other two hundred thousand, and if we don't, if we, say we don't do alternate one or not, just hypothetically, if we don't do alternate one and two, what happens to that rest of that money then?
We would receive it, it's a reimbursement program.
Okay.
So we pay and they reimburse.
You get only actual, actual cost reimbursement. Up to, is it seventy?
Sort of like that, if we don't spend that seven eighty eight, it's, it's gone, that's what I'm getting at.
Correct.
Yep. I just wanna be clear, so that people understand, but.
No, you get the nail on the head, that's exactly right.
And it was seven hundred eighty eight?
Seven, in change, where.
Seven hundred eighty something.
And some, seven eighty eight and some other whatever, I don't know.
Okay.
But that was like, I mean, if we, typically, I mean, what I'm getting at is like, we'd wanna spend up to that amount because we, otherwise we'd lose it. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, but as.
But the design fees part are, were budgeted.
Correct.
But, I mean, just, just for people to understand and.
Yeah, and I, and to, just to piggyback off that too, Rick, so I would, I would, you know, I would suggest that the, um, you know, maybe, maybe this is the conversation we have with the state and Todd as well, but the airport portion of that, you know, in, for, in the best of the county's interest, if we need to use all that seven eighty eight, that count, the airport portion of that would be excluded from use of those funds. Because it's, those funds are for the county's use on your road, it's, so, you know, if it came down to that, I would imagine that that would indeed be the case. We would just, alternate number two essentially would no, wouldn't be considered for use of those reimbursement.
Right.
It sits there and allowable, if the state allows it, and we have room to do it. I suppose we could look at doing that for the airports, but the airports reimbursing you for alternate number two.
Right, that's what I'm.
That's what they indicated to begin with, yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, we're looking at, is what I'm getting at is that we're looking at, what we're gonna spend, when you come back, you're gonna give us all these numbers, we're gonna lay it out, then we'll be able to plan accordingly because we'll. And I just wanna be thinking like, you know, like, where that money was gonna go if it wasn't gonna be, you know, what I asked earlier, what, what's gonna happen, and we already know now, but if we don't use it, use it or lose it, so you speak.
And then, the other thing was, is that we were originally gonna spend the money from the Prairie Dog money, so it was non taxpayer dollars anyway.
Yeah, but now you can allocate those funds for.
Right.
Whatever you guys want.
But if it goes over.
Right, we can.
We can use those as well.
Yeah, I'm just, because people are gonna ask questions too, and it's like, we're, you know, we're looking at other rules of what we're doing, and you know, you know, that's gonna, I, I don't wanna get these questions, so I just clar- clarifying it. I assumed that's what it was, but I wanted, I wanted to hear from you, so.
Okay, one more, one more time to explain it to me. Um, so we award, I hate using any names, but let's just, you, you use Bectol Paving, I'll use it too then. So if they're, their total, if we do everything, it's eight twenty four, then we'd only receive seven eighty eight. We'd have to pick up the remaining balance, then what, what about the rest of the engineering fees?
That would be, that would be, that would be on it as well, you know.
So the county would have to pick up the rest of that engineering fee?
Yeah, cuz the, the, the grant, the grant is for construction activities and, and construction engineering.
Okay.
That's what the grant's allowing, based on the lever received from the state.
All right. So, next meeting?
Fifteen?
No. Put that on the agenda for the next meeting, those.
Yeah, on your highway department, yep.
We'll have another bid opening on the fifteenth too.
Yes, you will, yep.
Okay? Any more discussion on that?
No, so we, uh, do I get to ask about, or is that out of the? I got Charlie here about that bridge, or what, am I out of line right now?
Let's, uh. Go, go ahead, otherwise I'll forget.
We were talking about the engineering costs that came through earlier, and I asked Travis, and we, I was wondering where the bridge that we were looking at, uh, somewhere north of eastern, or what that we were. Twenty.
What's the other bill for, that's what we're asking?
Like that.
On Mercer twenty?
No, it, it didn't list it, it was that section nineteen and thirty on one forty four eighty five is the, is the location. We weren't sure if that was a twenty twenty.
Mercer twenty bridge.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah, that's, that's, that structure. So the, 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 yeah, those costs are on the, uh, the construction side coordinating. We have box production date that we're trying to coordinate with them, um, getting paperwork from them on front end for cars entry, uh, coordinating the schedule with the contractor, which we've yet to get from them, but we did get a date of June twenty four for beginning the box production, which we have to go and, it's a new state rule, we, we consultants have to go and inspect boxes when they're produced. Um, to make sure all the steel is going appropriately, with the submit, so, some of this is submit or review, they did submit their, uh, um, box, I guess, uh, it was submitted in form for that, to lay out how it's gonna be mailed, review that. But yeah, that's what that's for.
So that's already on the construction side?
Correct, and that's part of, that's in the construction budget, I guess, for that project.
Okay, did you get your answer to both bills?
The first one was, oh, I don't remember what we had on here.
It's the, that was the airport road design engineering.
Whether it was covered or not.
Right, was that, is that, I think you were gonna ask, and I, was that covered under that, uh?
The state, originally, we didn't think any of it would, but then they sent an email to Ken stating, there sits the date of award of the grant, so April fourth and beyond would be eligible for design engineering reimbursement. So we went, basically changed the, went back and looked at it and changed it to everything built up to April third, so anything we get on it going forward, we get reimbursed on.
Okay.
Yep.
No, we could submit to be reimbursed on.
Right, right.
Okay, kind of a, kind of a play with words there, so, we can't submit any of the.
Yep.
Any of that engineering costs prior to April, say, third of this year. After, from April fourth forward, we can include engineering costs into the, the grant reimbursement amount. Okay?
Yep.
There, even this guy can understand that language. And everyone should be able to. Okay?
So I'll do it.
Question, answer?
Yeah, that's why.
So that's why you submitted that bill, so that way we'd have a clear line, cutoff line, so that way when we, if we have anything else, then we can have that go for the grant.
Yeah, cuz before, right, cuz before our cutoff was the end of March, or, yeah, March, and then we extended it three more days to include. Showing where the cutoff was, to show any, there were some hours between March thirty, thirtieth or thirty first, last day of March, and April third, so we just included in this bill, so that anything going forward would be.
Clearly.
Reimbursed.
Within the reimbursement zone.
Would qualify for reimbursement.
Which qualifies. And, and if the state audited that particular one, they would see the clear cutoff.
That is why we wanted to do it that way, yeah, great.
Okay.
So when do we make the motion to approve this bill, right?
We can do that.
Can we get that?
We can do that right now?
Let's do it at the end of the Highway Department, just remind me that we can.
So that we'll forget it and not get it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if the other four of you forget, then, I guess.
All right, mine too.
All right, you're on.
All right, next on the Highway Department's agenda is temporary summer help.
Just wanted to present to the commissioners, talking with Rick, um, if we can get a few individuals for temporary summer help, just part time. There would be no benefits. Um, I don't know if you would call that part time seasonal help. Um, we're thinking right around twenty dollars an hour, which, um, county would have to pay their social security, and that's a fifteen point two percent, so it'd be around twenty two point six per hour, um, for, for individual.
And they'd have to be at least eighteen?
Yes.
Reason being, we was looking at, it's like, we purchased this equipment, uh, we wanna have it running, we, uh, we've got grass to mow, we've got, uh, you know, ditches to mow, I mean, there's labor work, there's all kinds of stuff that we, we pull our operators off of these equipment rather than, and we're so far behind what we need to do, this, I, I, I think it's something that, I talked with Alice too about putting a package together and how to, you know, about pricing and stuff like that, and I just think it's something that we should look through, through the summer months anyways, because we really don't need the people over the winter, but we definitely need the bodies right now.
Oh, I agree, we shouldn't be, I, I, I'd rather see our operators stay on their machines rather than
How many?
mowing grass around signs or stuff.
Four, like we could even get two, you know, cuz we had heck of a time trying to find.
He said two?
I'm hoping two.
We were, we were, we were shooting for four and hoping for two, is what our plan was, so.
But, if you can get four.
If we can get four, we would take them.
Okay.
And you taking three or four months?
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the Highway Department hiring temporary summer help?
I'll move to approve the advertising for temporary help.
And the hiring?
And the hiring, yep.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Where do budget numbers sit on this?
Uh, yeah, that one position.
Okay, so let's say four, how many months, four months? You said you have a position open, Ken? So if it was, from before he did.
Before I did.
Okay.
Yep.
But we're looking about, like, for four months, four people, sixty three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars?
One individual would be rent under sixteen thousand, fifteen nine eighty five twenty, so rent at sixteen thousand for four months.
Sixty four thousand.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, if, if we have any vacancies in the timeframe, this would be a good pool to, you know, but it also gives us kind of a, you know, assistant help in the summer.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good.
I think it's a good, yeah, there's a lot to be done across the county, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion pass. Um, change order. Supposed to have that in here.
This is one we talked about last time and wonder whether the adjustment would be covered.
They did go down to three, they went from six thousand, a little over six thousand, they cut it half, so the total, you know, for that clearing and rubbing up on that box cover, it would be three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
I was gonna say, this is my favorite bridge up north of Golden Valley.
Yep. And, was, we were gonna ask if the adjustment then became eligible for the reimbursement.
That's what we're moving forward with, based on, because, couple things with this, so. Joel agreed to go half price on the cleaning and rubbing, if Ken talked to him, they came back and said, all right, here's everybody's cost. Since it's less than ten thousand dollars, in theory, that doesn't even require district approval, so we would push, we're resubmitting it, it's going in this week. So they'll say back, and they can look at it, and that we're submitting as if everything is participating cost. So even of the fifty percent reduction, of that fifty percent that you're not paying, we're assuming you're only gonna have to pay twenty percent of that fifty percent, because we're making it a cost share for participating.
So it's like six hundred, seven hundred dollars?
That's the goal, and I'm sure the district will probably flag it and look at it again, and may have some questions for us, but. That's the goal, and I'm sure the district will probably flag it and look at it again, and may have some questions for us, but, this is what we receive from the contract, so.
So right now, we're just waiting to hear if it can qualify for that.
Yeah, and, 'cause this is the final page for closeout on this job, and it's just like a constant circle with it, so, we're pushing it back in, and submitting final, and if everything goes through, then, okay, we'll finish up.
So it's gonna be our final bill on this project?
Don't hold your breath.
It's the final one we're gonna entertain.
The initial deal was exactly, we're too high for that type of project, so that's why the state kicked it back.
Right.
And now they did redo it, and adjusted it, so now we just...
So we gotta wait till it comes back, then we make a motion, whatever we're gonna do, so it's just, there's nothing to do on it today, then?
No.
Well, either way, whether we get the money or not, the bill's gonna be three thousand dollars.
No.
So the, the, the total amount, the, for the clearing and grabbing is now three thousand dollars, we would be responsible for twenty percent of that?
We might be.
We, we might be.
We could be responsible for the whole three thousand.
Uh, potentially, I just, my gut's telling me that that will be the case, but, potentially.
Okay, so...
We'll see what the state comes back with after we submit, after it's entered for review, if they approve it. Technically, I am the only one that has to prove it, um, based on the way I guess state rules are set up, but I'm sure they'll, like I said, they'll look at it.
So then we have no?
No action today.
No, alright, down this one. Okay, one more time on the John Shields Bridge later.
Told you.
Chapter fifteen.
Don't hold your breath.
I know. I'm gonna be probably not on the commission and still gonna be John Shields Bridge, sorry about personal comments. Truck tractor purchase.
Two thousand seventeen, we talked about that at that meeting last week, it was a seven, two thousand seventeen Pro Star, it's in Bismarck, they did that, they put a throw-out variant in it, and they're asking thirty-nine nine for it, um, a couple of the truck drivers went down and looked at it Monday, they noticed a couple other things, they're adjusting those, but we still, they still have not driven this truck yet, it's gotta go through the detailing yet, so, other than that, we thought it was a decent truck, just like that, it's only got two hundred and thirty thousand miles, and it's with that, uh, three fifty Cummins, um, Rick and I were talking, we had some, some issues with the particulate filter, and that's to do with the depth and with idling, um, since we don't use that, I mean, not much in the wintertime, um, and you just have to watch so they're not idling it, and if they do, they have to kinda crank it up a little, like to nine hundred RPM, so it's running a little bit higher than just an idle speed, 'cause that's when that particulate filter plugs up, and that's like two thousand dollar bill to change them out. So, that's really about the only bad thing about that Pro Star, you know? This truck that they got, we got that one back on last week Friday, they're doing some optimizations inside the cab, like the two-way radio and stuff like that, so, pretty soon that one will be, be able to start going here, so, I think that, he's on thirty-nine nine, I'm gonna see if I can do a little, little bargaining, but at least just if I can have someone that's ready to go, if we can pull the trigger on that.
So you're asking for approval? Preliminary approval?
If we can do it, I don't think we wait until the next meeting, after we look at it, it doesn't matter.
If it can wait, let's do that.
We'll probably end up doing a special meeting again or something, if we need to.
We, yeah, we can do that, I'd rather have.
Like we did the last one.
Yeah. Okay, so, no action on that right now?
Good lord.
You haven't got everybody trained not to call you on Wednesdays yet?
The road department calls.
Gravel contract with Randy Byram.
Did get the contract signed from Randy, we had talked about that thirty thousand tons of gravel from up there by, it would be at sixteen dollars a ton. So it was signed by him and myself, so, purchase thirty thousand a ton.
How many ton?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand's what he had, I, we, he had forty thousand on the, on the pile roughly. By the time we got out of the meeting last time, if I wouldn't have talked to him, it would've been gone, he already sold, uh, ten thousand to Beck for his street project in, in Beulah, and, uh, Marathon would've took, and every, taking every scrap he had, but he saved it for us, I'm glad I called, so, um, that's, I mean, I, I guess, I don't know how far you, I mean, I could tell, like I told some of the people about it, is like, realistically, if we put three inches of gravel on, I'm gonna start with, we, we spoke with Brownco, six inches of gravel runs, with them shaping the road, is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, no, it wasn't even shaping the road, the gravel wall, was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand a mile. We would put three inches on, which is half of what that is, thirty thousand ton will do seventeen point six miles, is all we can get out of our county, at three inches, for thirty thousand ton. We've got gravel roads, we've got roads in the county right now, that I would be wondering if, if, if the ambulance called, if we could even get them in or out of there. If there was a fire, I don't know if we could get a fire truck there and back. We've got school buses that are struggling to get kids to school, I, I don't know where the answer is anymore, but I mean, it's like, when, you put it in perspective, like, a gravel road is, if it's gravel, the, on it is averages, according to the, Charlie can, uh, probably vouch for me on this, but, the average is about seven years lifespan on a gravel road, for the gravel on it. If we would push it out to ten years, we are at one and a half times again, so, when you're just using ten, would make easier numbers to figure. If we, was, we have six hundred and eighty-eight gravel miles, is I correct, Ken, on that roughly? So, ten percent of what we did in one year was sixty-five miles roughly, would cost us almost two million dollars to buy gravel. And in ten years, we would barely get the county done and start all over again at that point, and it's like, so we're actively searching, and we've got a few people, we were looking for gravel, uh, we're...
There's been a few people.
Scoria we need to do, I mean, things that we got, options that we gotta look at, I, I don't know where we're at, but, it's in contract with this, this contract, I, I do, do strongly agree that we need to purchase this, and, uh, you know, and, we're gonna look at this commission, I'm imploring you to help us find what we can do to keep, to get these roads back in shape, I mean, it's like, the other thing you look at is like, if you may, we're doing it slowly, but if you waved a magic wand tonight, and just took all our roads out of this county, just put six hundred and eighty-eight miles of gravel structure back into this county, would be into billions, and it's like, we need to take care of this infrastructure that we do have. How we're gonna do it, that's the struggle that we're working with, looking at a contractor, we're, we're, sending these guys, uh, I don't know what the disconnect is from top to bottom, I'm, I'm taking it on my own shoulders with me, but, we're putting these operators to school, we're looking at overtime, we're looking at contractors, anything and everything we can do to get this thing in back into shape, and, I'm just looking for help.
Uh, I just wanna say this, like, as a commissioner, um, wanna get the word out there to all the landowners, if you know of any gravel in your, on your land, or your neighbor's land, uh, contact the Highway Department, contact the Commissioner, uh, we'll look at it, uh, we, we're just playing out of gravel, there's no gravel, I know a lot of, I've got, talked to this morning already about gravel in a road, and I say, I hate, I hate to repeat the same, you know, the old saying, song and dance, we have no gravel, we got a little bit, well, we're gonna buy here some gravel, thirty thousand ton, but that isn't gonna go far, I mean, all the roads that should be, not even should be, ha, basically have to be gravel, now this won't cover it, so, we're in desperate need of gravel.
And the most...
That's all we can, we commission.
And the most cost-effective way for the county probably to do it would be to sponsor, um, pits within our county, if they're available.
Yes.
I mean, 'cause then, we're paying our local people royalties and payments on it, and then, we're essentially, whatever is produced, we'll take.
Yeah, and, you know, hauling gravel from, well, just in perspect, let's just say from, even if there's gravel up in the big city area, and you haul it all the way down us, the southwest corner of our county, I mean, we're almost in Hebron, that's a lot of miles, so, we would like to find gravel around the county. But, if we have to, we have to, we'll, we'll, we'll truck it, but, we need, we need gravel, so get the word out there to everybody.
I think all of us have spent a lot of time on these roads, I think the road department is spending time on these roads, I urge people to continue to call with their concerns, because we can't be everywhere at all times, but, safety is obviously a big issue right now, so.
I was just on a road again yesterday, yeah, it, it needs gravel, but, I, I don't know where we're gonna, we don't have it.
I know, like I said, we're, we're sending it, um, we're, we're all, we're all in it together, I mean, I mean, we're sending these guys to school, we're trying to do a better job of what we have, um, we're, you know, looking at probably some overtime, we're looking at, you know, contractors, um, what we can put together, and, I mean, there's just, we have to try anything and everything we can, under our power, I think, to get this, to save the infrastructure that we do have, is my opinion.
How much of this is a state and/or national issue, insurance issue, is a lot of it, like, so that's a claim, I mean, it's all...
Dunn County, Dunn County, same way.
McLean?
McLean is getting there too, because, a lot of theirs is getting bought up by private contractors, there's, you know, underneath, but you gotta take so much over top off, you know?
That's what happened to some localish pits that got bought out by contractors.
The last thing is, I mean, how much, if you're finding limited, gravel is so limited, and this isn't working, and there's sources coming up, other than competition, are you gonna have other counties?
A lot.
We'll give you a prime example of what, what you're saying was, last year, we bought gravel for spot market, it was ten dollars a ton. We bought it this year, they did sixteen dollars a ton.
We haven't bought it yet, but...
We haven't yet, but that's what proposed, but, but I'm just trying to give, make a point where, where he's at, the bottom line is, is that that was the cheapest bid that they could find, they were, they were, they were outside, it's higher than that.
And that's not delivered, that's just...
No, that's just a purchase.
Just a per ton.
That's a purchase, and I know there's, I, you know, I grew up in this county, and we had gravel on our land, and I, I recall back in the seventies and eighties, it was like fifty cents a ton, now it's, yeah.
You know, and trucking costs, no matter what, I mean, it's fuel, equipment, uh, labor, I mean, it's over twenty dollars, there's gravel in the, you know, in, uh, McLean, e- eastern McLean, but it's over twenty dollars a, a ton to get, just to get it out here, you know?
I might be in touch, maybe with, I think I'm gonna, maybe do an editorial, I don't know if that's what my angle will be, just asking, like you guys are saying, landowners to, if they know of anything to, I might just be in touch to get some data.
I mean, Jean is, I've had the conversations with Liza, Jean, I, I, I looked for him, but he was in Williston, but, but we, literally, I mean, we've all talked about this, we've all talked, Jamie's talked about it, I mean, we're, we're looking, um, we've got two or three different spots that would, we did a one call, south of Beulah, going to look at one, we, I have another landowner that, in a couple, three weeks, he wanted to wait till seeding, but then he wants to go back out, we know there's some there, but how much, but, you know, typically, we, we go out with a backhoe, but we use, we're looking at Terricon too, is their, uh, bore drilling, so we can go down twenty-five, thirty feet, see how much overburden, see what's there, rather than, you know, we can't dig holes all over somebody's land and leave a mess too.
Charlie, I don't know if you know, I haven't dug into this, but is there any funding from the state for some of this stuff? That's not a highway or pavement, because this county's not made up of just that.
Well, I can check with our funding specialists too, and see if they're aware of anything.
Or if Ken, if Ken knows who to call, somebody, I just, not ever, yeah, the county's made up of more than just pavement, so.
Right, yeah, I know, just five years ago, it used to be thirty-five bucks a ton, haul, truck, put in place on projects, it's like, I'm seeing sixty-five, seventy dollars a ton, you know, on jobs that are...
Well, and we're gonna have these construction things within the county, I mean, Beulah's got a big construction project, Hazen's probably gonna have one in the future, it's, the stuff's not going away.
Right, right.
You know, I know...
And everybody understands that lives on a gravel road, you live on a gravel road, but there's a point of which the gravel road is not gravel anymore, and it's not safe, and it's, there's some responsibility on us too.
I know, and we'll have to address some of this at budget time too, but right now, it's like, I know, we got our backs up against the wall, I mean, we gotta do something, whatever we decide, but I know we gotta do something.
Okay, on this, um, so we're looking at, I need a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of thirty thousand ton at sixteen dollars a ton, which, if I can do this in my head, is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of gravel from Randy Byram.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Liza and Jamie, any further discussion beyond all that we've already had? Hearing none, Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion carried.
Right on. Making motions except of two, uh, bills that we, we withheld from, with interstate engineering.
Did you bring us those two bills?
I'm sorry about that?
Those two bills that we asked you about, could you bring those back up here?
I just got them this morning, everyone you've got, I just got today.
Okay, did I already get a motion to approve the two bills?
I made a motion, we don't, we don't have a, you had a table to table it.
Yep, but, it's back on the table now, so do I?
I made a motion to approve it.
Okay.
As presented.
I don't even know where to put this one, okay, Rick, do I have a second? Do I have a second to approve these interstate bills?
Liza's second.
Any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain, just because they're directly with my company.
Okay, uh, Rick, how do you vote? Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Thank you for reminding me, I had forgot already. Now getting ready on my list. Okay, it's not even on the clock yet, oh, do we have anything else for the Highway Department?
I just wanted, you know, I know that we are the ground, and all of these roads, I do want you guys to know also that I was in touch with Jim Gray over in McLean County, Kyle Miller down here in Oliver County, we talked with Jack Schneider from Norton County, and we talked to, and Mr. David over in Dunn County, and they, they have roads that are just like ours now. And it's a combination of this frost coming out, which the water on top of it, it acts like a giant sponge, Charlie and I were talking about it this morning, so, that's why they're sloppy, you pulled some roads, we're trying to get ahead of the deal, now we had all this rain, so that's kinda trying to make a road better, but, we got caught like this, they're just talking, raining all next week, and all too, so, like Greg and I, we're working what we can, but like I said, it's, we're not the only ones, and I know Kyle said he was frustrated too, and, and Jim was the same way too, 'cause they've got all this rain, sits on that road, and it's wet from underneath, that's coming up, it just acts like a big sponge, and there we are.
Well, I, I did, I told Rick that the other night, and the same road I drive from Mercer to Oliver, same.
Mercer's much better, isn't it?
See, it's, we're gonna do what we can, I'm gonna try to, you know, it's, the wind's supposed to blow on Friday, hopefully it dries off, the guys will work Saturday, possibly Sunday too, I don't know, I wanna get it, at least hopefully get back in shape for where the water does come, but it's still gonna be wet underneath a little bit, and that frost is still, and, uh, frost laws, I had heard through the grapevine, coming Thursday, south of Highway twelve, which is down by Bowen, okay? Well, we're north of that yet, so who knows, so those subgrade temperatures are not where they want to be for, to take that frost on, it's hot.
In, in part of what Ken was saying too, it's like, another, another part of our conversations that we've had too, is the fact that we, we're buying scoria, there's scoria in these, we should be looking for that too, and the one, we're not a preferred gravel, but I mean, I'd rather drive on scoria than I would on mud. You know, and, you know, we, in our conversations, we also like fourteen, sixteen, twenty-seven, five, thirty-seven, twenty-six, you know, a lot of these major roads, twenty, we save our major gravel for those main highways, and some of these smaller offroads, maybe we gotta start scoring them, just to, so we got something to drive. major roads, twenty, we save our major gravel for those main highways, and some of these smaller off roads, maybe we gotta start scoring them, just to, so we got something to drive on.
And scoria still makes a base for maybe next year, there's gravel for that.
I know there's some scoria pits in, in the, in the county, and that's one thing we do have is scoria. I mean, we gotta get, get it mined and get it, you know, so we can use it, but I mean, there's.
Yeah, we'll score your roads if people have scoria, then we can buy from them, and it's better than driving on wet clay.
Was there, like, some of, aren't some of those though, that are, if they're federal aid roads, we can't do scoria? Is that correct or not?
That's why we're talking about.
So I just wanna make sure the county, people in county understand that we can't just do scoria on some roads, some roads we do have to do gravel, so.
And that's why it's important too, it's like, so minimal that we have, it's like, you know, maybe we gotta look at other options, you know. It'd be much better to be driving on scoria than it is on, on, on dirt and mud.
Okay, anything else, Highway Department? Thank you, Ken, thank you, Charlie. Uh, Hazen Winter Sports Association, pull tab license.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Travis, Rick, any discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Uh, nine-one-one coordinator, what do we have on that?
Do you wanna help with that, or? In our conversations here.
Come on up, Alice, you can talk to her.
And, um, I guess I would just stick to that, you know, I wanna give that a try. I think I looked at it when I originally looked at it, I think the compensation is fair for what I'm asking. I think there was some discussion amongst commissioners and amongst Commissioner Bowman and I about wages, and, uh, there's, there's probably some, some room there to, in the future, take a look at things, but what I, what I'm looking at is what we're going, you know, we're going down from where that was assigned to one person, and I'm not adding that person, I'm redelegating the authorities and removing, you know, one person from staff, and so as far as monetarily, I think we, if you look at that end of it, the commission is saving money, doing it this way, and I'd like to give it a try on my original proposal, I guess I'm, that's what I'm asking. You guys heard the motion to, uh, assign that duty officially to Kent, and give him the, you know, with that, he'll be delegating them duties down to a couple other members of the staff. One other member of the staff, Rona, was already, you know, that was worked out with her in the past, I believe she was given, uh, the addressing, you know, bump to do that. And I don't know what the exact amount is, and split that.
Two dollars, I think it was.
It was near two dollars, I think it was one dollar seventy-five.
One seventy-five is the number I got.
And, uh, I guess, looking at this from forward, it's less than what I'm at, bumping, uh, my, the person we're looking at now, to do the, uh, technical mapping, the GIS mapping and, and stuff like that, and I'm gonna have to send her to some school to do that also, so, you know, it's gonna be well earned, I'm gonna, the, our, our maps are behind, we have some work to do, I'm gonna force that issue, and I'm gonna apply pressure, so it's, it's gonna be money well earned by all three of them, the people in that position. I, I guess I'd ask the commission that you consider my original proposal to, uh, give them, uh, two individuals, uh, to compensate for their, for their duties, and, and see if I can make it work, if I can, I'd, I'd report back to you.
The number I got was actually one eighteen, I don't remember what the one for Kent was.
Two hundred and forty-three dollars.
How much?
Two hundred and forty-three dollars a month.
Then any salary, they'll bring him to, to, uh, right near with, uh, what my chief deputy does, has compensated for it. He runs the law enforcement services for the county, and, but Kent is officially, you know, he's, he's running a jail, he's running a P S A, for the counties, and, uh, you know, and he'll be taking this on as far as the legal responsibility is for it, so I think it's money, money well spent by the commission. I'm not increasing staff, in fact, like I said, I'm removing one position away, and maybe just that dispatcher, uh, a dispatcher within the department. It was too much for them to work shift work and to do that job, it was just too much. It wasn't working.
So, now be the honorary one here. So if it doesn't work out, we just gave, if we approve a, uh, act, not a stipend, an act, a pay raise, let's just say a pay raise, and this doesn't work out, are we gonna reduce their pay?
I have the authority to leave it through the commission to, to, to do that, yes.
Okay.
And, and it's one of the things, be careful for what you wish for, if you've got someone that is telling you what they need to do the job, and you give them that, and they can't do that job, you know, their whole job too might not be the same coming back. I guess that's just part of life for them, and, and, I'm, I'm willing to do that.
So, to Jean's question, it only stands if they remain doing those duties.
Remain to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because if you don't, aren't doing it, we gotta, we gotta go to a different route, and we need, we need that, those funding needs to follow the job.
And we, and, and our chairman, our Commissioner Bowman and I knew we were gonna have some hiccups in redesigning a little bit coming into when we, you know, when we lost Carmen, of course, for to enter the department through the election, stuff like that, redesigning who and what and what we're doing, we're gonna run into some hiccups, and I ran into a little bit of that here. It was too much for a dispatcher working, uh, shift, for twelve-hour shifts, it was too much, and, and, uh, before I could get around to working into that, you know, that, that dispatcher, nine-one-one coordinator moved on, and that may have been some of that, uh, reason why she moved on, I don't know, you know, she didn't give me an exit interview, but, uh, it, it was too much, it wasn't
Okay.
we weren't given at the time, and, and that she needed to get that job done.
And part of the proposals that we, we've heard too, is that, you know, why is it more people, and it's even like when, exactly, it's like, when Carmen held that position, we were still using the dispatchers to, for nine-one-one, they still were doing, you didn't actually do the dispatching, they did it.
They did it, but I worked with them.
Right, yeah.
But there's a lot more, it's not dispatching, that position is about addressing for the whole county responsibility for the mapping.
That's what I mean, that's why there's questions of what, what's all going into it.
Yeah, needs time.
And, and we didn't add a person, we're, we're one person down.
Yeah.
We removed a position, that's what I'm trying to work through now and make this work with my existing staff. We are, we are, we removed one complete position from county paper, and that was Carmen's, and we're making it work within other departments, and that's why the hiccups, it's, yeah, it's a learning experience for me too, there was too much for, for our old nine-one-one, our coordinator, uh,
So, you're asking for a pay raise for basically three individuals, and you're gonna?
No, not two.
For two?
One is already being compensated.
Okay, for additional two?
She's data entry, updating stuff. I, I need to send, I would be sending, and she's, this is where I, too, like, what I plan on doing, if I send, say, Ashley Hill to, uh, GIS and mapping class, she's gonna bring Kent and one other person on the staff, bring the knowledge back and train them, so I'm not, you know, within an organization, if you can make that position redundant, or have other people can, you can do it, people can get sick, they can go on vacation, nothing stops. I'm not there yet.
Okay.
I'm working on that, I plan on doing it.
So you're, you're, to reiterate it, your request is, uh?
I'm requesting a compensation go to, uh, my, my jail administrator, P S A coordinator, and now it'd be nine-one-one coordinator legally, he'd be responsible for nine-one-one.
And?
For Ken Rose, and we will read through, with Alice, we're gonna rewrite that job description, and then, uh, Ashley Hill would be in charge of technical map, the GIS coordinates, adding, someone builds a place in the county, I got, you know, I, I believe I probably got a hundred wind towers between all of her Mercer, that need to be added on the maps.
So this is gonna be?
Stuff like that. She's gonna do that.
Additional work.
There's a lot of work to do, it's.
Additional work assignment to these, for these individuals.
Her job description will be rewritten, and if it don't work, we'll, we'll go back and fix it. I, I think this is the best fix going forward, I think it is, isn't it?
Okay.
So my, my one and only question is, have you talked to Oliver County?
No, I left that up to Commissioner Bowman.
What was your question again?
Have we talked to Oliver County?
On nine-one-one, yeah, I talked to her on that one. That was some of the questions they had, is why we did, did different, you know, why it took different people, and I explained to him what we were doing with the dispatch, the mapping, and when he had someone to talk to, he had to talk to Kent, his nine-one-one coordinator, so he'd know where he was headed, you know, with the things, and, and I, you know, I asked him to take it to, he said, I actually said, I asked him, he said he would take it to his county too, but yeah, I did the speaker.
Okay, what are we looking at then, uh, for a pay raise amount?
One eighteen an hour for Ashley Hill, and, uh, salaried, uh, monthly increase to two forty-three, would be a monthly increase to, uh, major roles.
This was in our packet last time, Jean, last meeting.
Uh, just clarification.
Well, yeah.
We needed in the motion, so. We can't just say a pay raise, we, we should say, we should stipulate what the amount will be.
And, and savings to the county, in the, to last packet, it's, it's still, that would still be at five thousand, over five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Doing it this, and I'll be on work again.
Yep.
We'll re-approach it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to put Kent Rose as our nine-one-one coordinator at the amount of two hundred and forty-three, two hundred, two hundred and forty-three dollars a month additional.
And?
Ashley Hill is our GIS mapping person at a dollar and eighteen cents additional.
An hour, okay, do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Nay.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Okay, ten fifty-seven, three more minutes, um.
Is that effective as, should we make it the first the next month, or are we keeping it for now, or, or is it effective this month?
Well.
How does it work in your books? That's what I want, my first.
My salary person is the, you know, uh, twenty-eight.
Well, today's the first. We can make it.
You get your letter, or letters, I get a letter, and then we'll raise it for the next month.
Next month?
Well. No, we've already done payroll this month, so it's gotta be me, me, so today.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Terry, thank, thank you, Alice. Do we need a short break, anybody?
Maybe after, after this, probably.
Okay, we're just gonna pause here for one more minute. Sure. Yep, we'll send someone out. Yeah, we will, if we can find you.
Okay.
Okay, eleven o'clock, uh, Farrington petition. Where our state's attorney go? Todd was in here.
Yes, he was.
Did he run?
Uh, he was just here.
Okay, we'll wait for our state's attorney.
Hi, Janelle, hey, I'm gonna put you on speaker then, so then you can listen to the meeting. You're welcome.
Okay, generally, I'm gonna kinda just, I don't have this written down, but, but generally, um, meeting protocol is, uh, when there's a agenda item, we have a motion and a second. If you don't receive a motion, and/or you don't receive a second, uh, item just drops, so. Generally, in most meetings, as we all know, there's a lot of discussion prior to even a motion, and most of that discussion is so that, that your board or commission understands what they're even making a motion on, and/or what they're going to second and vote on. Uh, this one here is, um, pretty forward, but, well, I'm gonna make an exception here before I ask for a motion, because if I weren't gonna receive any motion and/or second, you guys would all show up for, basically, you wouldn't get to speak, so I'm gonna forego that formality, and, uh, I will give each side, I think we have legal here from both sides. I don't know, I, I know I would see one of them for sure, oh, yes, and there's the other.
There's a third on the phone, Jean.
Pardon?
There's a third.
And, well, our attorney.
Well, no, a third attorney.
Oh, there is, on speaker.
Property owner is on the phone.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I, I think what I'll do is I'll probably.
Attorney for on the phone, who they represent?
Brian.
Brian, A A.
Brian Ollin.
Ollin, okay.
Brian here?
No, he wasn't able to be here.
Okay. Um, I'll give each attorney approximately five minutes to speak if they want to, I'll give, uh, the individuals, uh, a few minutes, three, four minutes, um, if you repeat what the previous person was saying, I'll cut you off, we're not gonna hear the same thing. That the wall is supposed to be colored blue, you know, by fifteen different people, all I do, all we need to do is hear it once. With that all said, if anyone's got any objection, I guess I care, but we'll move forward, so, um, who wants to go first?
And commissioners, uh, I, we, we spoke a couple months ago, my name's RJ Pathroff, I'm a lawyer at Vogel, Loffler, and Bismarck, and my clients are David and Elizabeth Farrington. Um, I have with me today David, my client, um, and Matt Weeks, who's a, a registered land surveyor from Interstate Engineering. Um, and last meeting, we, we generally oriented you all with the land access problem out at the Farringtons, uh, forty-ish acres, thirty-six, uh, something acres. Two alternative access proposal drawings were, uh, submitted by the attorneys for the S and R Partners adjacent lands, um, and we had, uh, gone through, uh, those routes, and we had Interstate Engineering, um, analyze those proposed new access routes, and that's, uh, those were materials that I emailed, had my assistant email to you all. And do you have this eleven-page sheet?
She's, your assistant said you were gonna have copies.
Yes, yeah, we do have extra copies, so if that's all right with you, can I bring those up, up to you all?
Yes, please. Can you just reiterate for me, this is the alternate access routes.
This is, this is sort of an overarching view of the adjacent area to the government lot two, is the Farringtons. And then you see, there, there was a drone flight that Interstate did, and that, Mr. Reese can explain the drone flight a little bit better. Um, but the drone takes elevations and, uh, of various points and analyzes these routes, so, to, just to kind of re, reiterate for you all, this was the Interstate prepared, proposed access route that goes over across the land and S and R Partners, and, uh,
Oh, oh, you just said that, okay, 'cause I can turn on if you want to.
And so here, this corner is the lot two, this is the Farrington land, and this was the easement that, uh, uh, Interstate surveyed going across the corner of the Ollin land here, and across the S and R Partners land to the existing gravel access route that goes into Hazen Bay subdivision. And this, this shows it a little bit better, so here, this is the Farrington property up here, this goes across the Ollin land, and this goes across the, uh, S and R Partners land to the existing gravel road, so that is the, our petition is seeking, uh, that the board utilize its powers under the central. So that is the, our petition is seeking that the board utilize its powers under the Century Code to create that, to lay out that access road. And the legal basis for the board's ability to do that, to lay out an art petition, and I won't belabor for you all, but generally, you know, under North Dakota law, properties have a right of access to the highway. It's not entirely clear who owes them that right of access, I don't think, under the law, but I think the county, County Wood in this instance. And this statute that we cited in our briefing, twenty-four oh seven oh six, provides the process for the county to solve an access problem like this one if the landowner's land doesn't touch upon a public road to allow reasonable access. And we, I covered in the last meeting that we believe this road is necessary because there isn't currently reasonable access to the property. And it's also of sufficient benefit to the county as a whole for the reasons laid out in the petition. So I think the law is there to allow the county to solve this access problem. And I don't think there's a question that there isn't reasonable access other than a route very similar to the one drawn by Interstate that goes along this draw to the corner of Government Lot Two. So this is the Interstate drawings, which is a little bit difficult to see.
You can take that sheet under your knee.
I'm neither gonna ask in favor nor unfavorable, but you're saying access across the Ollin land and the S and R land to a roadway, is that roadway public access or is that roadway private?
I, I don't know. Is it a public, is it a, I presume it's a public road into the subdivision.
I...
Into the subdivision, it is a public access road.
Yeah, I mean, so some of the things in...
Well, what I'm getting at is even if we were to go in favor of the Farringtons and say, okay, whatever the procedure is to get access to that other road, if it's a private road, big deal.
I don't believe it. I presume it is not going into the subdivision. Interestingly, so Matt can cover some of the details, but this drone flight data shows essentially that the two proposed routes, and this is kind of difficult to see, you guys can see it on your packet, going Government Lot Two to Farrington land, one proposed access route proposed by the S and R Partners group would go along the north section line and south, which of course is far longer than the Interstate drawn out right here. And the flight data shows that, you know, in these areas, there's very deep draws with big elevations. And the house of Roger Rausch there is actually within the statutory right-of-way for the section line. It's twenty feet off the section line about. And the statutory right-of-way to section line is thirty-three feet. So that's, if this section line is currently open, this home is within the statutory right-of-way. So that presents an obstacle, obviously, as well as an extremely rough terrain going this way. And it's just a very, very long, very long route out, and Matt can speak a little more about that. And then the other proposed way out would go to the north of the subdivision and down south to access this, this public road, I presume is public. But there's, again, very rough tree draws here with hundreds plus of feet elevations. And importantly, this checkered area subdivision is protected by an easement, a non-disturbing environmental easement. So to create a road on a section line, you would have to disturb those, that protected area, which the flats of the Hazen Bay subdivision doesn't allow. And then there's also a bar and structure down here that is within the thirty-three-foot statutory right-of-way. So, you know, once Interstate prepared this surveying data with the drone, it becomes very clear that there isn't alternative reasonable access to the Farringtons either for the Government Lot Two. The only thing that makes any sense is some viaduct cooling that's very short and flatland into this dirt road. And interestingly, the mist line is the platted access road to the Hazen Bay subdivision. But the dirt road that actually, the gravel that goes into the subdivision does not follow that easement. So that's just something, something to note, but the actual legal easement does not follow where the gravel road is constructed. So, you know, we're here today asking for a motion under the section twenty-four oh seven oh six of the Century Code to approve our petition to lay out this new road that we've had surveyed by Interstate that's attached to our petition. The Farringtons are willing to participate and wish to participate in the financial cost of that road.
I was gonna say, who's gonna pay for this public road and build it?
Yeah, so the power of eminent domain rests with the county commission, and that's the tool to create this access. But the Century Code chapter also allows for this to be done by agreement with the landowner and allows financial participation by, by groups and private citizens other than the county. So that's, that's what we propose, is that, you know, the Farringtons bear the cost of creating this road with, by an agreement with the county, but that the county utilize its powers under this section twenty-four oh seven to solve this access problem. You know, I think, I think the county, under the law, owes a right of access to a land block landowner. And I think this is, this twenty-four oh seven oh six that we're seeking to create it with is the tool that solves this access problem. And the alternative to going into these people's home blocks, you know, this proposed access road is just along a field here and doesn't disturb any of the night structures. You know, any impacts of the land, value impacts of the land, Farringtons are willing to, are willing to pay. The statute allows the county to come up with an amount to be paid to the landowners who are impacted by laying out a new public road. And, you know, the Farringtons would be willing to contribute those costs, those reasonable costs of construction and the taking of that land to solve this, to solve this problem.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I'd like Matt to just kind of walk you all briefly through the data that Interstate prepared.
I'm gonna call a point of order here real quick. Farringtons are petitioning this board to exercise eminent domain on not one but two private property owners, not for a public use. This is for a private use. Constitutionally, you do not, no government entity has the authority to eminent domain for a private use, only for a public use. This is not a public use. You do not have the authority to exercise eminent domain over Farrington and Allen, Ollin?
Ollin, Brian Ollin.
By the way, his attorney is out of Wapton. I spoke with her earlier today. She's on the phone. The carman has up here on the bench. Very simply, you do not have the constitutional authority to do this. As far as access, if somebody has a road, we have to give them an access to the highway. That's talking about on our right-of-way. That's not taking away private people's property to give to someone else for their sole benefit. My advice is that this not be exercised by the county. It would be unconstitutional, and that's the end of the discussion.
Okay, we heard from our state's attorney. We'll, I'll allow a little more. You've already had ten minutes. I'll allow a little more time.
Okay, good morning. Basically, so page one of the packet is just an overview. The west line would be the west section line. The line across the top of the page is the north section line. And then along the right-hand side of the page would be the east section line. If you switch to page two, that's kind of a blow-up of the area. That would be the west section line. Down at the bottom of the page, that graph, we call that a profile. So basically, on that graph, horizontally, one inch equals a hundred and twenty feet, but vertically, one inch equals thirty feet. So it's kind of doubled in scale just to give it more definition on that end of it. This was flown with a drone. It was flown with a DGI Phantom four with RTK. It's, to create our surface, we do it the same way that the photo companies did KBM and that sort. It takes lots of pictures. It stitches them all together. It runs it through some software and creates a surface. From that surface, we can create the contours. From the contours, we can pull out elevations.
Okay, I think I'm gonna stop you now. I think most of the commissioners here are very familiar with the area. So I know, I know I am. I don't know about Rick, but I think Jamie is. Liza might not be quite as informed. We, but we're very familiar with the area, okay? Mr. Solom, do you, you got twelve minutes. I give out them twelve, I'll give you twelve.
Thank you. I'm Scott Solom. For those who don't know me, I represent the, one of the landowners, the partnership landowners, which I call the Schwab family. The Schwab family, the parents acquired this property fifty years ago, have farmed this property, have paid taxes on this property, have earned a business on this property, have maintained this property for fifty years. Brian Ollin, the other landowner, probably has a similar story on his acquisition of the property, use of the property, maintenance of the property, paying county taxes like any other private property owner does. Your state's attorney, you know, has told you what the law is on this. He's told you that accurately. The use of eminent domain should, you know, shouldn't be used lightly. We're seeing this in western North Dakota right now with CO2 pipelines. In particular, is a hot, hot item in the press about the possible use of eminent domain to take away people's private property for purposes of, of that purpose. And there's, there's a case that's in the district court right now fighting over amalgamation or eminent domain and what should be used for private property. You know, this is private property. This is surface rights. It's eminent domain. Eminent domain has limited circumstances where it can be used. Mr. Schwartz accurately told you that it cannot be used for the benefit of a private property owner. It's typically strictly used for public utilities or common cure pipelines. That's, that's the limitation on how you can use eminent domain. The property here, we had previously sent an opposition brief, you should all have it, that sets forth the limited case law on the statute, as well as the statute and what the requirements are. The requirement is that there can't be access where you can use it. Not, not difficult, not inconvenient, not a less expensive way to get into taking people's property. If you have a public road, which a, which a section line is by statute, if it abuts your property, you have access. That's all you have to know. That's all the courts would care about if this were a judge. Is there, is there a section line here? Is this a quarter line or is it a section line? It's a section line. Hasn't been closed. It's a section line. You can get to it. Nobody can stop you from getting to it. Nobody else is responsible to give you good access up there. That's not the Schwab family's responsibility. That's not Mr. Ollin's responsibility. That's the property owner's responsibility. He wants access. Coming to the county and trying to convince you, you know, pluck on your sympathetic strings here, so to speak, to say, hey, this is, this has been in our family a long time, which it has, and, and, you know, and we need better access than what the section lines give us. You know, sure, that would be great, but that's not what the statute says. That's not what the case law says. It's just not, unfortunately. This is where private property owners are supposed to negotiate with each other and try to come up with terms and come up with private easements. The road going into Hazen Bay subdivision is private. It's not platted. It's a public road.
But it is public access.
Well...
To a point.
Here's, here's my point.
To a point, but I understand.
One of my, one of Terry's deputies follows a swerving vehicle that goes into that. He can arrest him for DUI.
Sure.
Somebody wants to drive in there to look at the houses. We can't, Sheriff's Department can't stop them and charge them with trespass. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, don't the Farringtons own at least one of those lots in that subdivision?
I guess I'm not sure at this time that they do. Obviously, over the course of time, they have.
Okay.
So, so in the...
So, you'd agree with me. At one time, don't know for sure to date. They owned some of those lots or one of those lots.
Yes.
All right, so here's what we have, folks. This goes further. Even bolstering more the argument that I've put forward that Scott's advocating, they had access through their own land. If they don't have it and they sold it, that's not appropriate for the county now to say, okay, you sold and profited off the land that gave you access. Now you want us to come in and take land to give you access? Doesn't fit common sense-wise. And right down to the base argument, if it's not constitutional, put the brakes on, we can't go there. And by the way, every one of the arguments that Scott's made here and in his brief and the statements that I've made, that if we exercise eminent domain, not only do we face those arguments, which are winning arguments, but we're on the hook for Scott's attorney's fees, the other landowner's attorney's fees.
I got one question. Just when you, Mr. Pathroff or Mr. Solom or, when you provide eminent domain, say we did, okay, you still are entitled compensation, just compensation. Schwab land would still get paid. Am I correct?
Yeah, you'd say that...
That's the next place I was going, Rick.
Yeah, there was, the circumstances were such that you could legally take the property, which we're saying you can't. But say it was challenged and, and the county were successful in defending its, its taking of the private property. The county would have to, it would be an issue if, if the cost of the value of the property couldn't be negotiated, it would go to the courts. And a judge would decide what the county would owe the private property owners, because the county would have to essentially purchase that property.
Cause I mean, that's, that's like, why are we, I mean, the land, the landowner that wants, wants the land, has to pay for it, he's gonna pay for the road, and it's like, why are we here? Why wasn't this negotiated at some point rather than sitting here in front of the county? I mean, I don't know, is there, is your clients don't wanna access or what? I don't know what the deal is.
I think that historian perspective, you know, was presented in Farrington's petition, you know, as far as the history of, of the development out there, and I think it was kind of reiterated in our response. You know, originally, this land was altogether, and an option was provided, I think for about ten years, where, where this easement could have been forced legally through, through an option that was provided by the sellers of the property to the Farringtons. And, and the Farrington's parent, parents didn't exercise that option, for whatever reason, didn't exercise the option, they could have put a road in. Then they developed the property. And again, why not just put a road in through your own development to access this, this piece of property? When you did your development, when they did the lots, you could have held back a lot or two or whatever you needed for future access to that property. So there's been a lot of historical, historically, there's been a lot of opportunity here, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen. And, and I can tell you that for the, for the time that I've been representing the Schwab family, you know, there hasn't really been a lot of negotiation. There's been a little bit of negotiations, but not a lot. Not nearly to the extent that was alluded to at the last hearing. A lot of communication with the families and that there hasn't been. Not that there hasn't been any, because there has, but, but... Not enough that it couldn't have got worked out before, possibly, before we came here.
All right, that brings me another point.
You're making me hit stop quite often. Sorry, I don't...
I, I want to get through this efficiently with the accurate information. Does this mean that never that road can be built unless, only by the good graces of the Farringtons and the other gentlemen? No. If they have a problem, it's not for us to exercise eminent domain as a political subdivision, as a governmental entity. If it's really that big of a problem, they can sue for easement by prescription, and that's a private lawsuit. County's not involved. So number one, we don't have the constitutional authority. Number two, there's other remedies. So, my advice to the county commission is to deny this petition for the most important reason, it's unconstitutional. It's an inappropriate exercise of eminent domain. And number two, they have other alternatives. Section line, possibility through the, the public access road to that subdivision. Or three, an easement by prescription suit between the private parties.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I didn't think you'd mind.
I think, I think...
And I have stopped the, the time, you got 6 more minutes.
And like I said, most of the legal, legalese stuff is briefed by both parties. So if you refer back to those documents, I think you'll see the legal requirements and the standards that we should be looking at. So we'd request that you deny this request on that with my clients, you know, they just sort of come and not take their property for, for access to another private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Mr. Allent's attorney have anything to say?
Yeah, just briefly if I may, I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
We can hear you.
Great. My name is Janelle Frederickson. I'm with the Smith &amp; Strickland Law Firm in Wapton, North Dakota. And I represent Brian and Kelly Allent. They are one of the impacted landowners. They own the property, it would be the southwest quarter of the northeast of Section Four. In layman's terms, it's the property directly south of the Farrington's Government Lot Two for which they're seeking access. And as impacted landowners, my crawling still very strongly, they're very strongly opposed to the request and believe that it's an unnecessary overstepping request to take what is currently private productive ag land out of production, essentially for the adjacent landowner's convenience. It would appear from my review of things and from the testimony or the, excuse me, the argument presented today that there are various other access points that would involve section lines, the Farrington's own property, and the housing development, which at one point, they could have designed their own access to the property. It, it, the statute referenced, Section 240706 references in, in access that could be created if a public road is necessary and that it is of sufficient benefit to the county or township as a whole. None of those prongs of that statute are met here. This is simply a private landowner seeking access across other private landowners' property for their convenience because other routes may be more expensive, might be less direct, might be less convenient, but that's certainly not the test. And to take this productive land out of production and to, to, for the, for the north landowner's convenience, to me, doesn't meet any of the requirements. And, and certainly, private to private party infringement is not what's intended by the statute or the eminent domain process. So, as I indicated, my remarks would be brief on behalf of Brian and Kelly Allent, but they are opposed to the petition and request that the petition be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have a comment? Okay, I'll just make a brief comment. I have talked to the landowners other than the Farringtons involved. And the indication I got was this, that it is not a complete denial. My... The feedback I got is negotiations are possible with, with this access. So it's not that it's completely off, that, that, that all those parties are saying absolutely not. I was given the indication there is possibilities. So, just to put that out there. Anyone else got any questions or comments?
Just some finishing comments for me. I've already made the constitutional statute, I want to clarify with access. Okay, let's say somehow they come up with a road that leads up to our actual improved public road. The statute that's being cited, we have to give them authority to build their own access. We can tell them where to put it for safety. That statute requires us to give them an access. An approach would be another word to describe it more accurately. Nothing in the statute says we have to build a road to somebody who bought land out in the middle of nowhere. So, as far as the commission's involvement, the petition is asking the county to exercise eminent domain. I've made my legal opinion quite clear, we do not have that authority. And therefore, my legal advice as state's attorney is to reject the petition.
Well, this is a kind of a little bit different. Generally, you don't make a motion to deny. So it's either a, a motion to accept, and if there's no motion, it's...
You can do either, accept, deny, or table indefinitely. And I would advise against the third option.
You want a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion to deny or reject the petition as presented.
I'll second.
Who made the second?
Jamie.
Jamie. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to deny the application by the Farringtons. Rick?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And Gina voted aye. Motion denied. That's it, we're done. We will recess for until 11:45.
44.
Yeah.